One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like you to stay standing. We're gonna have a moment of silence for our fellow selectmen who passed away unexpectedly last week. Very good. And where is Renee?
She's here.
Oh, Renee. Okay, so I'd like to jump.
Hold on just a second.
Okay, well. I think we should do, is it called posthumous? Posthumous, what's after?
Posthumous.
Posthumous, there you go. That we should have that appreciation certificate for her if she was their daughter.
Yes.
She really needs, she really should do that.
Yes.
So, but she's very good at doing that. Next time we could sign it and give it to.
Totally agree.
All the years, because she was the school board and she was the select board.
She's been part of everything.
She was the postmaster, I mean, really.
There's two daughters in my son.
And a hunter extraordinary.
And I know. How did you say it again?
Posthumous.
Posthumous. So Renee, we getting started?
Not yet. I've got a camera.
So we wanna do a certificate of appreciation. We'll sign it. And we'll sign it next time. Need a motion to sign the warrants. So move.
I'll sign it.
All in favor?
I don't have the warrant, but Jason, you can get anything Renee.
The warrants are en route. And I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 28th, the special select board meeting.
Add a second. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. So no oil business, no water street cabinet liquor license renewal. Can we see that Jim's here? Nothing, no changes, same CD, well, I guess.
Wait a minute, we did mandate before this was approved, you put on a new roof and get a new oven and dishwasher. Have you done those things you've asked you to do?
Not completely.
But close enough for jazz.
That's something that Jim.
Just don't drive down there. I can't guarantee you it's not getting nails on the road.
Ooh, sidewalk is dust.
You know, I have one of those really cool, really magnet things that picks up about a foot.
I got one of them.
Do you have one of those?
Oh, I got one of those.
Just go up and down, you're down.
I will make a motion to sign the liquor license approval.
For Water Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So this is what we have to sign in blue, with blue pen. Renee should be giving it.
Did I hear you?
I don't think.
Wait, her blue? No, she's got it coming down.
In blue, you have a blue pen? Jason, you want, this is the blue pen. Just pass it with the paper. So while we are signing that, and we're glad to see your back and open and the score is high.
Friday night, first night.
Oh.
This is Friday night?
This is Friday night. Friday and Saturday only until we see what happens.
Yes.
Same, same staff?
Actually, I am just thrilled to death, yeah.
They all came back.
They're very good.
That's good.
That is, that is something to be proud of.
Yeah, and they were all down to Saturday. They were, I mean, it was just elbows and you know what?
Yeah, that's good.
You have a great month.
They know the routine.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's good.
And man, it's just so private, new stove.
You probably were supposed to say printed name and title, but a little signature, and then Renee, do we not have to do printed name and title as well? After the test. Well, we'll pass it back down to them.
Oh, yeah.
Say it.
Number two there.
Do you want to leave and pass it down, the salesmen get on the bus, go to the bit opening, pass it back if you want.
So selfish warden training.
I have a few questions.
Friday night. Sheldon, go ahead now.
I'm wondering why she wants to be trained as selfish warden.
Well, I don't think we can answer for her, but I think she just wanted the backup of rules and she's the chair of the, she couldn't actually be the chair of the selfish committee and also be the warden. That wouldn't be, wouldn't happen.
And she's also calling it Plan B also, and.
Well, I don't know what it's called for her. She just ran a 50 a few weeks ago and said she'd like to be, she'd like to go to the training. But as far as training goes in general, the town office has training and we are so lucky that everyone in the town office is cross-trained. Everybody in the town office can do everybody else's job pretty much. And that's amazing, except for me. I can't do this job. But I'm sure that her feeling is it's better to have two people train than not, than.
We've always had two.
We usually have a selfish warden and a deputy.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, what about dog warden, deputy dog warden? Because we've always had both.
So, I mean, I would, I would never discourage anyone who's in the business to be trained.
That's right, yeah.
Another question is the selfish ordinance. She has put stuff at last clam meeting, I have to read you on the record, that she's putting, putting new stuff about the non-residents claiming that if you didn't get your license last year, that you can't get your license this year.
The rule is, as far as it was when I was on the committee for five years and we did those rules, that if you hold a Lubec license in three out of the last five years, you would qualify for grand being grandfathered in. So I don't believe she can change that rule.
It's not written in the ordinance that way.
It's written, it's written down under the.
In the selfish meeting. So does the committee have the power?
It's also written in requirements for licensing because it was run by the DMR.
It's not in the ordinance.
Well, it's in this separate piece of paper on licensing, which was approved of by the DMR and Heidi Layton. So I don't wanna speak out of, out of school, but I'm pretty, that has, that, I don't.
The ordinance has been ten percent.
We have to go by the ordinance.
Switch it to ten percent. And also she.
Well, it's, no, it's ten percent, yeah. It's ten percent and you also have to have a license three out of five years. It's not one or the other.
And she also pointed on in the last week's clam meeting, last week's person, last week's clam meeting, that it's now mandated for me to take six weeks course for this to be clam warden. Is that also true?
I don't know. There has to be somebody higher up in the, in the chain.
I'd love a message for Heidi Layton to call me, call her today, but I'm not gonna ask her those questions. I'm hoping she's the one to start.
So could we, could we write the, these questions down and we get them answered, or get them answered?
I was president of that meeting and heard the explanation also. What was explained was that the selfish warden that did not have full training was restricted in the summonses that he could write. That to continue and get the rest of the training would bring the selfish warden up to the same level as a DMR representative and able to write summonses for whatever the law said.
And we went, we went there last.
They have to do that hundred hour police course.
I'll basically be a marine patrol bot. I'll be working for the town.
Right. We went there last year, remember, and we, same, same.
Sheldon has fulfilled all of his online requirements. He was waiting at the mercy of the state to have their once a year class, which is usually in March or April. They have put it off and to be revisited in June. They refuse to do it remotely. So we're at the mercy of the state. And thank goodness we have an arrangement with a neighbor clam warden that can write summonses. So there is enforcement happening.
Congratulations, Sheldon.
Thank you.
Good.
And was there a call in last year for non-resident licenses? Yeah.
You mean, did they have ten?
Yeah.
I don't know, the years I involved, there would be seven or eight, and there would be two where you could come in at eight o'clock in the morning.
She also said in the clam meeting that there wasn't no holes for a non-resident, any non-resident could get one. That's not true.
Any that have had, like Carol said, held the license three out of the last five years cannot be refused.
Right. And they get it a week before it goes on sale. They're allowed to buy them before the July first deadline. And whoever buys them then, let's say six people buy them, there'll be four spots. And at eight o'clock in the morning, when the town office opens up and it's advertised in the paper that, that there's, we don't know how many spots, but it's by.
But if the committee has the power to change how we, I don't know. I don't know.
No, I don't, I, you know.
So no advertising.
Jill and I, we worked on that, and I, and Heidi Layton was the one that wanted the ten percent. And.
So we've got to get some clarification.
We'll have to check.
Yeah, and I would just like to know more how to be informed more often about new rules, new regulations, what's going on, even with the conservation. Sometimes she posts it right up, it's today, or the clam meeting, it's today. She needs to give more, you know, a notification, like put up a flyer or something. Instead of just putting it on Facebook, because a lot of people don't have internet.
There is a flyer up at the first office of conservation, and the, and the meetings, as far as I know, are the first Monday of every month at six o'clock.
I told people that, but some people don't know that because they don't have.
I may need a flyer after.
I might write that story down.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
So you're, you're pretty much saying, you know, put it at the IG and the patents.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I'm saying.
Yeah. Should be posted the same thing like the ward is, so people know.
Right.
Their secretary had, was down, so she kind of asked about that, so.
Well, do we have, who's gonna fill, we had, who was, who filled in for, Ms. Sonia was our representative, so we're kinda, you have to cut us a little slack here, Sheldon.
Oh, I know, I know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall in for it until you guys.
Fine. Well, somebody will run, someone will run for Sunday's spot, and then.
Somebody else on the committee could be the secretary, you know.
It doesn't have to be, yeah, someone else. I don't know who's on the committee right now.
I don't know, I haven't pulled.
And Amanda can do the, do the secretary, I mean, right from there. But, so you'll deal with for a few months until we have a new person in August, thank you. So it would just be July, it'll just be, it'll just be two more months. Thank you. And that's a busy time. Did you go to the last one? So when is the next one? June?
June 7th.
Well, it's, the clam meetings are very busy at the times just before the licenses come out because they need two hours of, and just, you know, all of a sudden there'll be 50 people in the rooms, I think.
They had it outside, actually.
There's a lot of people at the last, last one.
They had it outside, right?
They had it outside.
Because the thing is, four hours of conservation, two hours of meeting time, and then you can get your discount from your license.
Yeah.
We're glad that you're here and getting involved. How's the dog and the warden job?
It is going great. It has a few people that licensed their dogs, they golden licensed them, a couple of them were wanting to go with the dog, they also had dogs, and of course I asked them if they, they had a license. I had one couple say, yeah, it's licensed. We did it down. I said, no, you gotta have the dog licensed, because it's state law.
There has been, and I found out what the scoop is on this. There's been a golden retriever running across Main Street, back and forth and down the meadow, and several people put it on Facebook.
Yeah.
I found out that Wayne and Mary Ellen, or whatever, have had a dog in heat. And this.
Calling card is out.
They, yes, they sniffed her out. This dog sniffed her out. She has just now had puppies, so he's, he's not.
Wants something to do with diapers and.
Yeah, I, whatever. Yeah, there's a shower that's kind of there, I've got, right, yeah. That, but that was what was happening.
It'd be a great chance to remind people that the deadline that was extended for dog licenses is now June 1st, right? Or 4th?
June, June 1st. I will be calling the people to remind them.
Excellent. So what are these papers?
This is for the E-911 alternate, E-911 addressing officer. Myself and Penny spray, I'd like to be appointed as E-911 alternate officer, addressing officer.
And what, what is that, what, what do you do?
Debbie is the E-911 addressing officer. Anyone that is submitting requests for new house numbers, when they build a house, they have to get an address. It has to be the whole process, so.
Okay, but excuse me, Penny's gonna be deputy, so she can do it, right?
Both of us, yeah. I've been doing it.
Oh, you've been doing it? Okay, that's good.
I don't know that I was ever appointed, so I'll make sure.
So I will make a motion to appoint Penny and Renee as deputy 911 officer.
I'll use second.
All in favor?
Can I sign it?
Yes, you can. Matthias Little League, this is a happy story.
Yes.
I guess they called, Renee said they called.
There's a letter, there's a letter in here, and they just, they sent it out, I believe, to a lot of the towns and businesses, asking anyone to make a donation to their league, the Matthias Little League. I contacted Mike Kennesi, the one that sent the letter, and asked if there were any Lubec students involved. And he happily told me that there are 11 that are involved. So we do have a T-ball account that was set up years ago here. It's got 1,200 some odd dollars in it. If you, I just bring you the information if you want to.
And you know, with dominations, the wrong way that would go in the third party request for the budget, but you know, you know what? Apparently, Bill Day, or Martin, during his reign, started a little fund for Little League. It's like a 1,200 dollar money. So I'm suggesting we pay 300 of it and we get a banner.
Sponsors of 300 or greater may have a banner displayed in the outfield.
Yes, we want a banner in the outfield.
I mean, it's for our kids.
Do we have something like a Lubec, that Lubec flag, something like that?
We'll find something.
Yeah.
Want to do the pod? Well, I.
Three. Because we're gonna might have to buy a banner.
I love Little League.
Can we take the money out of, can we take money out of it?
I think the 300 covers it.
Boys and girls.
There was a banner.
Been here about six, seven years. I will make a motion, we approve $300.
What I wanted to do was save some for next year and the year after.
Well, here's your plan on it.
This money was all in favor. So who made the motion?
Jason.
The second is.
And I think that this, yeah, this could be, aside from the usual rush of beg for money.
Yeah, I think separate, 11 kids.
Yeah.
And Mike Kennesi is a very good, very good.
So public bathrooms. Last year, we didn't open them because of COVID. I don't know what the CDC rules are, the state rules are right now. I know it was at one point, they had to be cleaned every two hours. That was not gonna happen, so we didn't open them. I don't know what, how you want to perceive it. I think that it would be nice if Stockton Park was open because they're gonna have music events there, but we have to follow the guidelines of the state as far as plumbing is going, so.
Who would you have responsible for cleaning?
Penny does the Stockton Park, and I, and I did the Marina ones.
I mean, he's not gonna do it every hour.
Well, that's, so I think that the whole motion has to be subject to the restrictions of what we, what we have to do for public bathrooms. Do you know Nancy?
I, I heard that there's gonna be a whole new CDC recommendation within the next couple of days about masks inside, supposedly outside supposed to be 100% in June. I think the restrictions around the cleaning have already changed, but I think they're going away. But I was raising my hand to say that I'm on the LAMP's board, and, you know, we just did the roof and the stage and all that. And we've had discussion in regards to the concerts this year, and we'll assume, once an hour during the days of the concerts, we'll make sure the bathrooms are clean.
Okay, so there's more, much more people there.
Right, so I mean, the rest of the, we're not taking on cleaning the rest of the, but for those concert days, we'll make sure that somebody circulates through at least hourly and, you know, we'll wipe down common places and stuff. So we're prepared to do that on the six concerts that are scheduled.
And I will say, you guys did a phenomenal job. It was great down there.
They, they're pretty amazing, aren't they, family? We're determined to do it, and the board stepped up, had some donations for the shingles, and then just all the board folk showed up and actually did the work. And there was enough, there's a couple of younger people on the board that carried the shingles up the ladder, so like, you know, the older folks didn't have to, but they were still up there doing.
I saw, I saw.
Yeah, Dr. Fauci, just since we're talking about that, has said that there should be more liberal use of masks, that the towns, as we go for it, could do more liberal use of, or not using the mask.
Common sense.
So I would make the motion that we can open the bathrooms, provided we can follow the guidelines properly and it's not like every hour.
I will second that.
It's like twice, two, three times a day or something. Because I would be really.
I will second it.
Encourage hands, yes.
But that's provided it's not totally off the wall is what we have to do.
If I could just add a comment to that, it should be noted that the library bathroom is typically open, but the library is closed on Thursdays and Sundays. So if we have ferry traffic coming in, people looking for a bathroom, the library is not available on those days.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna open the bathrooms back up down here, provided it's not every hour, because this is the way I'm gonna.
You can see their bathrooms, and we're gonna buy some, rent some porta potters.
We may end up with some very healthy trees.
And the dairy is not gonna.
They're all gonna get them on Monday. Yeah, they, they left the bathrooms.
No, I agree with whatever it is.
Yeah, so there's yours, and they're, they could use the restaurants hopefully, if they, if they'll let them. Lubec landmarks is open.
I assume if they open the rest of food, they're gonna open the bathroom.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, nomination papers. So in the light of the sad passing of our fellow selectman Sonia, we have to make a vote on opening up that la, year, that would be a year. There was a year term left in her position, but it's also what, a shortened denomination time? We want it to end at the same time the other papers did, so.
So it'd be a nomination paper for the remainder of her.
Yes, which would be one year, yeah.
Only the select board has the authority to do the shortened nomination papers.
So I, I would entertain a motion that we submit, we allow a shorter nomination time. Do you have some kind of nomination sign?
Yes. This one here. Oh, second?
Oh, second.
All in favor? So when are the papers due?
June 4th.
June 4th, okay.
It's the same thing as this.
Oh.
Hey, what else is in there?
I have no idea.
Dan, your favorite thing.
Okay, other business. We have to open up the municipal bids. Do we have any bids? We can only hope.
Lots.
All right. Okay, let's see.
You want the letter opener?
Uh, yes. I'm going to.
Write it down.
You're gonna write down everything, right?
I'm gonna be the secretary.
Okay, you're gonna write down, oh, amazing, this is for just a bid. Open it up, mysterious.
I feel like I'm in a Tarantino.
At least there's not checks in this one. I always worry about.
Who's the support?
This is Sean Blanche, DBA Carlton Cory Garage, wants, would like to submit a bid of $60 per hour on labor charges for town Lubec light duty vehicles. So you writing that down? Now, I don't know if there's another one in here because it doesn't say. This is for heating oil, this is for roadside mowing, this is municipal trash, this is airport mowing, this is landfill mowing, and we'll see what this one is.
What was Sean Blanche for?
Vehicle repair.
Vehicle repair.
Exactly.
I think it was 16 hour and all select forward repairs free. Well, you must not know that Sean Blanche, three doesn't end there.
No. Okay, so this is RH Foster.
Okay, let's take care of that one. I'll make a motion that.
Yeah, we're gonna accept this.
Approve Sean Blanche for $60 an hour.
Second.
Is that with the.
For vehicle repair.
Selectment piece in there?
Of course.
I'll talk to him later about it.
All in favor?
I'll push that one.
Okay, so this is for heating oil. We have kerosene, here's another heating oil, airport mowing, landfill mowing, roadside mowing, municipal trash. Okay, we have two heating oils, so it's open for this one. So RH Foster is, we can offer a fixed price for 4,000 gallons of heating oil for 2.479 per gallon, and they're going, ooh.
2.408.
And this one here, Dead River, the heating oil is 2.3762. Those were two for heating oil.
Was there a, was there a, just because RH has 4,000 gallons?
No, there doesn't, there's no limit on this one. Doesn't have a limit.
And then propane?
Okay, propane is, RH Foster was 2,900 gallons propane for 1.999, and Dead River has, oh, the propane fixed price at 1.6780. Kerosene. I don't see kerosene in this one. Do you see kerosene?
I don't think we, I don't think we have any kind of.
What uses kerosene, General Systems?
General Systems. Dead River does kerosene at 2.7011. Some people do have kerosene heater. So what, what shall we do with this?
So only one did kerosene? That's Dead River?
Should I make a motion, we accept Dead River?
Wait, 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 General Systems, they do have, they have four, under, it's under General Systems fuel. Kerosene would be 2.839.
Who's that? RH Foster? And what's the price again?
2.839.
And what was Dead River's price?
2.71.
Yeah, 2.7011.
Should I make a motion, we accept a bid of Dead River for heating oil, for propane, and for kerosene? I will second that.
All in favor?
So that's General Systems, and propane and everything, right?
Yeah.
Everything across the board.
Now, I, I assume you're gonna refuse yourself from the trash ones, the trash bid.
Yeah, I think I know.
Toilets disposal would be honored to continue servicing town Lubec with municipal trash removal. Our bid for '21, '22 is as follows. We will supply one to four yard dumpster, which will be placed outside the Lubec Town Office and emptied once a week. On Saturday, we will supply a one, one to two yard dumpster, which will be placed at the new town garage. This dumpster will be emptied if needed. We will check daily and empty as needed. Three trash receptacle supplied by the town from May 15 to, oh, October 15 on Water Street. We will check daily and empty as needed. One trash receptacle placed at the town here from May 15 to October 15, thank you. We will check daily and empty as needed. One trash receptacle placed by the town at the town arena from May 15 to October 15. Our costs for these services will continue to be 150 a month, due in the basis. What shall we do with that? There were no other bids.
Accept it.
Second.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the bid by the North South Rubbish Removal Corporation.
Do I have a second?
I second that we accept the no so.
All in favor? That's what it means, a no so, right? All in favor?
Three to zero in favor, one to zero.
Uh, it's like, okay, airport mowing, oh, it's the roadside.
Oh, lovely.
I thought we had a three-year contract for roadside mowing.
We came to contact and anyway, it was up this year. We came to contact and anyway, it was up this year.
Oh, okay. They know that, right?
Yes.
I Randy Hall submitted a bid for roadside mowing in the town of Lubec for a sum of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Thank you, Randy Hall. What, what have we been paying? What is our, has our budget been for roadside mowing? I'd like to know. Here's a budget book, we must have a budget, something in there. Let's hold on that, I wanna look up the budget first. I don't, I don't know, it's a whole twenty six, because he doesn't go on twenty six miles of road. I mean, we've been having it all along, who, what's, gotta have it in the budget somewhere. Okay, I will mow the airport as needed for safe landing for a hundred and thirty five dollars per mowing. Uh, Gary Morrison.
Greg.
I mean, sorry, Gray Morrison.
Hundred, hundred what?
Hundred and thirty five, and then he just put in his, uh.
Which one is that? Landfill?
No, airport.
Airport.
And here's the landfill. So I just don't wanna know what we paid last year, that's all, I mean. Thirty two? Well, maybe, maybe one up. Well, we must.
Carol?
Yes?
If I recall correctly, last year was a two year contract.
Three.
Three year contract, okay. And it was offered that way because the insurance cost was down.
But we can't enter into multi-year contracts.
Yes, we weren't allowed to do multi-year contracts, what are you, the numbers to ask?
I thought that was presented at the town meeting.
They voted it down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It was a good deal and it would've worked, it was great.
What, what, at the last little town meeting we had, I wonder?
It was a special time.
Special town meeting, no. So they, the citizens could've given us permission to go into multi-year contracts, but they said no.
Right.
Oh, okay.
That's the only way we can enter in this.
I will cut the landfill area twice, once during June and once in October for a hundred and forty five dollars each time, Gray Morrison. So who would like to make a motion on mowing of the airport and the landfill?
No other bids?
Well, we do, we have this one, I just wanted to know what it was last year.
No, for, for the landfill and the air.
No, we don't have.
I will make a motion, we accept Graves for the landfill and the airport mowing. It's a great motion.
All in favor? Now, what about the Randy Hall roadside mowing? Well, we do the roadside mowing, I just question is, what do we normally pay?
I'll make a motion, we accept.
She's done a great job.
I'll make a motion, we accept Randy's.
Yeah, we've always done it, I'm sure it's reasonable. A lot of, a lot of roads to mow. How often does that get mowed?
Once.
Once?
Did anybody second it?
Yeah, it was a second.
Oh, so, I'll second. All in favor? So is there anything, we put out the bid, we didn't get a bid on?
Bandstand, but anyway, no, not on this.
Because this is Renee's. Okay.
Municipal fuel for municipal fleet.
Oh, yeah.
And furnace.
Yeah. I don't know about municipal fuel for municipal fleet, who do we normally get that from?
RH Foster.
It might have been, look at, okay, let me see that, maybe there was something else on there.
They have a card, a fleet card.
Look, let me see. There was an awful lot of stuff on that letter. Yearly furnace maintenance.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, here, gasoline and diesel for trucks.
Okay.
We can provide an RH Foster fuel card for each vehicle for use at any dealer or direct station, as card, card use will allow an eight and a half cent discount from the pump price for either gasoline or diesel. I apologize, I missed that.
Did he have, um.
And he had furnace maintenance.
Yeah.
Hmm. Do we, do we ever take furnace, furnace maintenance from that?
No.
Well, they've also submitted a bid, twenty four hour coverage, can be provided on services of the furnace at current hourly rate eighty five dollars. We can also provide a silver efficiency contract at locations which qualify for a hundred and fifty nine dollars each. These units will be subject to inspection prior to putting a contract in place, they're a one year contract, so I don't know if you wanna consider putting a fuel maintenance contract in. So those, those two things will be beyond the heating oil, propane and general systems.
So I'll make motion, accept RH Foster municipal.
Yes, second, correct.
All in favor? Thank you for bringing that up. Dan, thank you for bringing that up.
I was just being attentive to my duties.
I'm really glad you were, with the rest of you.
So we did do the furnace maintenance?
Uh, no. I mean, I, does anybody wanna do furnace maintenance? I mean, do we have any furnace here?
I think we have a contract right now with Dead River. Because it's a, we buy a service contract.
Well, they're not, they'll look in the back.
Yeah.
Probably so.
They put it in, too, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
So any updates?
Just status quo with the revolving loan, I have a few questions answered legally.
Harbor board?
Yeah.
It is, um, it's on the odd, it's not this Wednesday, so it'd be the following Wednesday.
Twenty eight, oh, Wednesday?